Good evening, Chair. Calls the order, public hearing, fiscal year 25 budget, public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments concerning bill number 24-014, which is the proposed annual budget and appropriation ordinance for Harford County for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, and also Resolution 011-24, which proposes to maintain the current tax rate, and Resolution 012-24, which is the capital program for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2025 through June 30th, 2030. The council also accepts and will consider written testimony submitted in addition to or in lieu of verbal testimony. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do, Mr. President. We have 14 this evening.
I would say go ahead and call your first speaker, and I would remind everyone that we have three minutes apiece, and to be respectful of each other in these chambers.
David Bauer, followed by Kim Rupp.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer, 2952 Kirkwall Court, Abingdon. Last year, our county administration built the county's budget based on bad information about the school system's financial status. Remember that? The county administration had a $21 million error in the figures they used. This year, it appears they again built their proposed budget based on bad information. Speaking for the county executive, Mr. McCord said, quote, "Harford County Public Schools is currently sitting on nearly $100 million." In reality, on the day that Mr. Casely released his budget proposal, the school system was estimating only $30 to $35 million in unassigned fund balance. It has since gone up due to some county administration shenanigans with the health insurance rate stabilization fund. In Mr. Casely's last letter to the Baltimore Sun, he appears to acknowledge the actual amount, which is now approximately half as much as he and his administration were talking about before. So again, we have a budget proposal built on bad information. Ultimately, the county has a responsibility to provide services, which have a cost. If the county needs to increase revenue to provide those services, then the county executive and all of you have a duty to raise revenue. It feels like every single time Mr. Casely speaks about the budget, he declares he won't raise taxes. The man doth protest too much, methinks. Seriously, our county executive acts like he knows that the county should raise taxes, but he doesn't want to do it. It is like he is allergic to the phrase "raise taxes." And I do mean the phrase, because of course, last year, his buzz, his budget raised the taxes on telephone lines, but that was called a fee and not a tax. Now, the county could get by this year without any change to the tax rate. The decrease in projected fund balance usage between the original budget for this year and the current projection is enough to cover the entire requested increase with the school system, and also fund the raises for the Sheriff's Office civilian employees, and also better fund the libraries and community college. As a property owner and taxpayer, I think you should cancel Mr. Glassman's tax cut, but the county has the funds to fully fund the school district's requests this year regardless. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Kim Rupp, 810 Chesney Lane, Bel Air. Good evening, council, and thank you for taking the time to listen. My name is Kim Rupp, and I am a lifelong resident of Harford County, and I'm a proud civilian of the Harford County Sheriff's Office, where I have been employed for 14 years. Before I talk about Sheriff's Office civilians, I want to touch on Harford County Public Schools not being offered their promised 5% in funding. I'm not a parent, but it doesn't take a mother or father to know how important funding is for schools. Learning and guidance should start with the family unit, but unfortunately, it doesn't always, and the schools and law enforcement overlap when we see kids struggling because they don't have the love and support at home. I decided to come speak tonight to express my disappointment in the county executive's decision not to offer Sheriff's Office civilians a raise. Fiscal year 24 did not provide a raise for HCSO civilians, but sworn members of the agency graciously gave us a portion of what they allotted last year. Now, here we are, fiscal year 25, and HCSO civilians will not be getting any type of raise, but in fact, we are getting a 6% decrease, yes, a decrease, since our health benefits are increasing by 6%, a percentage that we were not anticipating. Mr. Casely's choice to give all other county employees a 1% COLA and $1,000 merit is a slap in the face to civilians, and the attitude of everyone else can have it, but they can't, makes me feel like I'm back in high school. I can assure you that there are civilian positions that hold responsibility that others would not want to take on, like making sure that the protective order that was issued by the abused victim is properly processed and put out to be served immediately. Or how about the warrant being entered for the person being charged with inappropriately touching a child? That's a civilian job task. And a child goes missing, we enter the information into a national database. Falling up on sex offenders being registered, another civilian position. In other words, we don't just sit in offices answering phones and pushing papers. Without the 161 civilians, there would be no police agency. We are the background workers that support our sworn and the county, and we take our jobs very seriously. Civilians are affected by everything that goes on around us. Charlie Lucado, Ian Lockren, Teresa Testerman, Pat Daly, and Mark Logston, those are the names of the sworn law enforcement and correctional deputies that have passed during my 14 years. Have you ever listened to A Last Call? If not, then I recommend looking it up online. It's absolutely gut-wrenching. I also cringe every time I hear bagpipes play. Why? Because you hear them at police funerals, one of the most beautiful, yet mentally exhausting days that you will ever experience. So council, with everything that you have heard tonight and previously, I ask that you please vote against the county executive's proposed fiscal year 25 budget by supporting the HCSO civilians and reminding the county executive of the 5% that was promised to HCPS and the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold on just a second, we have a technical issue.
Daniel Williams, followed by Robin Winternitz.
Hold on just a second, Dan.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, Dan.
Dan Williams, 78, 17 Clark's Place, Parkville, Maryland. Born and raised here in Harford County, Harford County employee, also president of local 1802, representing Harford County employees. On behalf of Maryland Council III, local 1802, representing Harford County employees from the highways and park recreation maintenance divisions, I am here to express our discord with the proposed fiscal year 25 budget. The county executive's budget includes a meager 1% COLA and 1,000 merit-based raise increase for ineligible county employees. What the county executive doesn't openly broadcast is that the proposed budget includes a $15,586 raise for himself, an approximate $14,000 raise for the Director of Human Resources, an approximate $7,500 raise for the Director of Administration, and also a $7,800 raise for the county treasurer. This only highlights a few, but the county executive budget is littered with substantial raises for his appointees and the higher echelon of his administration. When he released his budget, he stated that it would be a flat-line budget, that we as county government and county employees must hold the line in these uncertain economic times. But I guess that only applies to the common rank-and-file employees, not the county executive and his appointees. Let's talk about these common rank-and-file employees and what these fine men and women provide to the taxpayers of Harford County. Local 1802 bargaining unit employees are deemed essential personnel, critical to the operation of county government, who are required to respond in all situations. Our highways personnel, approximately 107 employees, maintains 1,075 miles of county roadways, all drainage ditches along these roadways, all the county storm boxes, and trimming the trees along these roadways. Not to mention their efforts plowing the roads during snow and ice events, as well as clearing down trees during storms and hurricanes. These fine individuals clear the way for our great first responders to get county citizens in their dire times of need. These individuals not only maintain these roadways, but make it safe for our county taxpayers. Our parks and recreation personnel, maintenance division, all nine employees, yes, only nine, are responsible for maintaining 185 sites, approximately 14 acres of land, 185 baseball or softball diamonds here in the county, eight activity centers, 140 playgrounds, and 46 miles of public trails. These are the work, that's, this is the work that nine individuals are doing at this time. These individuals also assist our highways personnel during snow removal efforts. Without these individuals, the recreation programs here in Harford County would cease to exist. County citizens would not have manicured ballfields for their children to play on, playgrounds to have fun on, walking trails for their leisure and exercise.
Dan, can I get you to bring your comments to a close?
The county executive wants us to hold the line, and I say to him, hold the line with us. Do not give your employees substantial raises. Give them the same 1% and $1,000 raise that your rank-and-file employees do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Robin Winternitz, 821 Delray Drive, Forest Hill. Hi, I'm a resident of Harford County with, who, oh, who owns a small business. I'm an educational consultant hired by families all over to navigate the school system to better serve the needs of their children. Presently, I am working with many Harford County families. I believe our community needs to know what is happening in regards to education for children with special needs. You need to know that many of these families believe that there is a mismanagement of funds, a misallocation of resources, and an overall lack of accountability to students and us as taxpayers. Are you aware that it has become common practice for educational systems to have in-house attorneys, but hire outside attorneys to fight families on educational matters? This is all on the taxpayers' dime. So while a family provides for their children and trusts the school system to keep their kids safe and to educate them, they often are not. The school, school systems are all guilty of this. When examining the standard practice, here's what happens. Students struggle. Most of the time, the parent voices a concern, and on occasion, the school expresses a concern. IEP meetings, individual education plan meetings, student service plan meetings take place, and testing is often done. In some cases, the families have private testing done and then share it with the school at a meeting. Sometimes services and supports are provided, and students' needs are actually met. Many times, this is not the case. Families look for outside help, other schools, or even homeschooling options. In situations where a student with special needs does not get the necessary help, this is what happens. A student struggles, is often bullied, and is not learning. Other students are distracted by the student. Teachers are frustrated as they can't do what they need to do, teach. If a parent exercises their rights to get a due process hearing, the county then digs in. That's when they bring another attorney and utilize all of their resources, our tax dollars, to fight families. Many lengthy meetings, extra testing, requiring more work hours, instead of looking at the data and focusing on the child. In many cases, this money and time spent fighting families could pay for the tuition for three to four years in a non-public school. A non-public school is a special school that is approved by Maryland State Department of Education to meet the needs of students with special needs, and they could cost anywhere from $40,000 to $100,000 a year. Some of the court hearings are stretched over nine days, where Harford County has used school monies to fight families instead of educating the student. This is what taxpayers need to know. In fact, in other counties, we have done FOIA requests and have seen what taxpayers have actually paid for these outside attorneys. Our community needs to be aware of this. Harford County needs to stop fighting parents and focus on their due diligence of educating children. Another issue with Harford-
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
Okay, is accountability. What happened to the COVID money? Not everyone can be taught in the general ed setting. There are a wide variety of settings.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Gibbons, followed by Ken Shannon.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Henry Gibbons, 2402 Papaya Road, Edgewood. Good evening, Council President Vincentini and members of the Harford County Council. Before coming to this meeting, I reviewed my missive to you from last year, and I was distressed to find that if I wanted to, I could almost give the same speech again with only very minor edits. But I will spare you that indignity and voice my own concerns for this year's budget, which unfortunately are related to those I voiced last year. Now, for two years running, we've seen the county executive propose a budget that flatlines the school, or the expenditures for our school and library systems. It's unfortunate, but not entirely surprising, that that same county executive continues to tout his support for education engaging in photo op after photo op with our county students and educators prominently posted on social media, while, all the while undermining the financial support that the county provides to the schools. Our expenditures rank 17th among counties in the state, and per student funding on our class size, on average class size ranks an embarrassing 26, and or, and, and second to last in Maryland counties. You'll hear from others about how the proposed budget will affect the services our schools provide, so I'm not going to belabor those points. But I will state that in an era where knowledge, training, and skills that our students acquire in the school systems and from our libraries is critically important to the futures of our, as citizens of the county, and the aggregate skills of the workforce of Harford County will be critical in recruiting businesses and employers to the county, the reduction of services and quality of education that will be the inevitable result of slowly starving these systems will eventually cause those entities to consider setting up shop elsewhere. Education should be the last thing cut or closed, not the first. To continue on this thread, this is also the second year that the budget proposal stipulates a drawdown of fund balances, which you heard a little bit about just a second ago. Now, in basic financial education, we're all advised to keep a few months expenditures and savings to deal with potential hard times like, say, a global pandemic. That's the purpose of fund balances for schools as well. Maintaining those funds is a healthy thing, and it's recommended as best practice as a risk management tool. The current proposal asks the HCPS to spend down its reserve funds for operating expenses and leave nothing in the spare tank. This is just kicking the can down the road. Ultimately, the decisions to cut services or increase revenue are going to be yours sooner or later. Let's not forget that this current financial pickle comes in significant part as a result of the previous administration's short-sighted decision to lower property taxes in an election year. Let's not even pretend that we don't know what that was about. So it's your responsibility now to make those tough decisions, and I hope that you will make choices that reflect the values of this community, because this proposed budget does not. Please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, council. Ken Shannon, 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. Thank you, council, for your thoughtful leadership and contribution to the budget process. We citizens of Harford County depend on you as our final voice into the 2025 budget. One project that is funded in the 2025 budget is the Perryman Granular Activated Carbon, or GAC, plant improvement for $259,000. There's also a proposed expenditure of $3.5 million in FY 2027 for Perryman wellfield improvements. Before all of that money is spent on the industrial plant for pumping water out of Perryman, there should be a study of the potential threats to the aquifer that supplies that water. The Maryland Department of Environment's source water assessment for the Perryman wellfield has not been updated since October of 2000. That's almost 25 years. Since that time, over 9 million square feet of warehouses and freight terminals have been built on the Perryman Peninsula. The increase in impervious surface created by those buildings, their parking lots, and new roads has not been examined. My neighbors and I have been coming to these council meetings for nearly two and a half years, pleading for an updated study of this water source that a third of the county's residents depend on. The 3P Coalition has provided language to Councilman Bennett that could be used to update project for FY 2025. It includes recommendations for conducting comprehensive and independent environmental assessment of the wells, targeting the presence and levels of PFOS, PFOA, and other per- and polyalkyl substances, or also known as PFAS, as well as other contaminants. We recommend that the study be conducted by a third-party environmental consultancy with no prior existing financial relationships with the local government, and also that there be oversight and monitoring and an annual audit. Appreciate your consideration of this important health and safety matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lee Bondrell, followed by Gavin Hanley.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Lee Bondrell, 638 Gerlock Place in Bel Air. I'm a nationally board-certified English teacher with 26 years of experience, two kids in the system, and I'm a taxpayer. I come from Arizona. Here we are again. I do want to thank you all for your advocacy last year, but I have to tell you, I'm exhausted. Those of you who've been on the, on the dais for a while, you will know who I am. I have been here every year, begging for funding for schools. I will not tell you why we need it, because you have plenty of speakers telling you that. What I'm going to tell you is why you don't have more people sitting here and talking to you about it, more teachers. It's because they're applying to other jobs in better-paying districts. And if you want to test the veracity of that information, you can find out how many non-certified teachers we have this year, and then compare it to how many we will have next year. The answer is 197 this year. And I don't want to demean non-certified teachers at all in any way, but those are positions that are being filled, that need to be filled with certified, experienced teachers, and kids are suffering. And if you can sit there and allow that to happen without making the change that needs to be made, you're just going to continue to bleed people from this district and from this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Gavin Hanley, 608 Squire Lane, Bel Air. The proposed 2025 budget for Harford County Public Schools includes a 12%, 12.7% increase in local appropriations, an additional $40 million from last year. This would be the largest single-year increase in local appropriations in at least 15 years, with an average increase of 2.9% per year over the last 15 years. $17 million of the proposed HCPS budget goes to an employee wage package. Wages are being raised in part to meet the Maryland Blueprint policy of all Maryland teachers earning a salary of at least $60,000 beginning in 2026. Several of the budget increase requests for HCPS are to satisfy Maryland Blueprint or Code of Maryland regulations, including the HCPS Office of Equity and Cultural Proficiency with a budget of over half a million dollars proposed for 2025. Part of HCPS's blueprint implementation plan is to increase the percentage of teachers of color. Administrators are making diversity a priority, using an equity lens in all staff recruiting, hiring, retention, and promotional processes. Harford County Public Schools is prioritizing the color of someone's skin when hiring and promoting. The color of someone's skin, or any other immutable characteristic, should never be considered when selecting someone for a job. The only thing that matters is hiring the most qualified and competent person. Parents of Harford County deserve the best for their children, and hiring teachers based on skin color instead of merit is wrong. This is a terrible policy for HCPS, but unfortunately is being implemented to meet the statewide blueprint policy on equity in order to continue to receive state funding. Investing in education is an investment in the future of our, of our community. Like any investment, money needs to be spent wisely and efficiently to receive the best possible outcome. Simply spending more money does not lead to a better outcome. In 2018, Shawn Bolson became superintendent of HCPS. At that time, HCPS had a total revenue of $448 million. In the proposed budget for 2025, HCPS has a total revenue of $660 million, a 47% increase in revenue in seven years. The most important question after a proposed 47% increase in revenue over seven years is, have student outcomes improved? Is Harford County taxpayers' investment in the future paying off? While some subjects, like English-language arts, have improved, other subjects have gotten much worse. In 2018, 61% of Harford County students tested proficient in geometry. Last year, 9.6% of Harford County students tested proficient in geometry. 90% of Harford County students were not proficient in geometry last year. I encourage our council to ensure that Harford County Public Schools is spending money as wisely and efficiently as possible, and to not allow the citizens of Harford County to take on the financial burden of poor policies set forth in the statewide Maryland blueprint. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Glenn Gillis, followed by Cindy Popper.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Glenn Gillis, 1936 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. Speaking tonight to request clarification on several items with regard to the proposed FY 2025 Harford County budget. First, the Woodley Road interchange. While the Perryman community has been promised the relief from industrial traffic through our community for over 20 years, the recent slow movement forward on the present CE's and council's assurances that the Woodley Road Exchange project is moving forward, it is unclear what project, process, uh, excuse me, what progress has been made and how the budgeted $4 million will be used when it comes to completing the project. We look forward to clarification language detailing plans and completion dates that's not available now in the proposed budget or other documents. The second item, Spessusha Road improvements. The community has spoken numerous times about the significant safety and quality of issues, like quality of life issues on those that travel and live on Spessusha Road. While it is our understanding that the engineering for the widening of the road and the installation of sidewalks and other improvements have been completed, there is no mention of the project going forward in the FY 25 or other out-years in the new proposed budget. What is the rationale for this project being ignored in, in the plans and in the budget? Third, height monitoring system. The Perryman community has worked to have the state-enabled legislation passed, participated in the county's working group on detailing for the implementation of said system, and, and supported the Harford County legislation for the height monitoring system to be put into place. These efforts were significantly focused on helping to resolve issues with illegal industrial traffic on Spessusha Road. Why is there no mention or budget for this project in the FY 25 budget? The Perryman Peninsula community is concerned that our needed safety and road improvements on Spessusha Road and the related height monitoring system have been sacrificed to pay for the Woodley Road issues. Once again, it appears that the decisions of the past administration and their lust for unchecked industrialization of Perryman are being paid- for unchecked industrialization of Perryman are being paid for by the underserved community most affected by the egregious projects. Protect Perryman Peninsula has provided more detailed comments and proposed corrective language to the CE office and Mr. Bennett. We look forward to the resolution of these issues between the CE and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Cindy Popper, 952 Angel Valley Court, Edgewood. Good evening. Thank you for having this time to engage with your constituents. I'm continuously baffled when people speaking to this year's budget try to compare and question amounts by using comparisons to budgets from '21 or 2022. Since 2021, the cumulative inflation rate in the United States is 19.9%, and since 2022, it is 15.2%. In 2021, '22, and '23, the county executive fully funded the school system's request. The budgets of '21 and '22 reflected modest 6% increases in the requested amounts from the previous year, which barely covered the rate of inflation. The 2023 budget was 10.5% higher than '22, still not an exorbitant increase. The superintendent and the board of ed in their budget presentation made it abundantly clear that the increase requested this year would maintain current service levels and only add several regional special education programs that would save the school system significance amount, significant amounts of money that they are paying for outside placements and services. People like to criticize HCPS for a lack of achievement on standardized tests and equate that to reasons for cutting or limiting funding. It just doesn't make sense. How does cutting programs and positions that directly serve our students, especially in areas that are directed at those students that are struggling, improve academic achievement? Again, doesn't make sense. I don't believe that asking the county executive to hold to his promise to increase funding 5% is too much to ask, especially when it will directly impact the programs and services that are available to our students. That 5% could drastically change the cuts to programs and services that will have to occur if HCPS must manage a $40 million deficit this year and a potential 60-plus million-dollar deficit next year. Please ask the county executive to keep his promise and increase funding to HCPS by the 5%. Thank you for all that you have done and all you will do to continue to support the children of this county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Doug Rudd, followed by Nick Sordillo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Doug Rudd, Bel Air, Maryland, 204 Steed Lane. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again tonight. Like so many of the people that are here this evening, it's not the first time you've heard my voice. I did not grow up here. In 30 years that I have lived in Hartford County, Hartford County Public Schools has not received the funding they asked for 28 out of the 30 years. If you compare that to almost any situation that you have, a budget for a business, how you run your household, how about something like your car? If you never do any of the, the general maintenance that's requested for your car, sooner or later, that system is going to begin to falter and break down. And that's what we have in front of us right now. After years and years of systematic underfunding, we sit around and point fingers about where's the money being wasted, or why can't we have this program, or why are the test scores going down, or all of these things. It comes down to one thing. You have to make education a priority. I find it very odd that the most underfunded agencies in this budget are the school system, the community college, and the public libraries, followed closely by the Sheriff's Department. Last year, we listened over and over again as the priority for the county budget was the internal EMS system, and how outdated it was, and how they need to provide better services in EMS for Hartford County. I don't hear any of that this year. I don't see or hear a goal or a purpose to anything in this budget, except that I'm not going to raise taxes. What is your goal as the county council for us, the people that live here? Tonight, you guys are hearing from us. You have some really tough choices that you have to make, but the number one thing that I would ask you guys to do is, how is this budget serving any particular group of people in Hartford County when so many people are desperately asking for your help? And you have come to the rescue of the school system in the past. We hope that you'll be able to do that again this year in some capacity. But the bottom line is, I don't see a goal or a directive from this budget or the county executive for how he's going to move this county forward. So unfortunately, that's going to fall on the ladies and gentlemen setting up on the dais tonight to direct that for what's going to happen. Last week, I referred to this budget as a train wreck. I've seen nothing that's going to change that analogy. We need your help, the citizens of Hartford County, not just the school system, not just the Sheriff's Department, not just the civilian employees of the Sheriff's Department. This entire county is looking to you for leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Hello. Nick Sordillo, 454 Majestic Prince Circle, Havert Grace. I am a teacher and a coach at Edgewood Middle School, and while everybody's already told you why you should fund our schools, I'm here to advocate to keep middle school sports on the docket. I'm not going to lie, I was very disappointed when I saw it in the proposed budget cuts. Since its inception last year, it has been huge in our community at Edgewood Middle School, and it has been huge for our students at Edgewood Middle School. I have students who tried out ineligible, needed an appeal, and by the end of the season were on honor roll and have stayed on honor roll. I have students who have wanted to continue playing sports and developing as a player and a leader, but have not been able to because these sports have become prohibitively expensive. They told me it was $800 just for them to join the team, let alone travel costs, any other associated costs with the programs. These sports provide an opportunity for our students to bond. They provide opportunities for memories to be made. In our second year, we won our first game for girls' basketball, and it looked like the Orioles clubhouse after they clinched the AL East last year. And again, my girls tied a soccer game this season, and it looked like the AL East clubhouse after the Orioles clinched the AL East. So I just am urging you to consider finding room in the budget for middle school sports. It builds teamwork, it gives girls leadership and mentorship opportunities, and it's a huge accountability piece. All of our athletes have shown in-season growth in the classroom, they're more engaged, they're more, they're held accountable because they know that these opportunities can be taken away from them if they're not doing what is expected of them as student athletes. It's a huge part of our community. I don't know if you've been to a game at Edgewood Middle School, but it's almost like going to a college game. The atmosphere is incredible. We usually have all sorts of entertainment. Our step team performs, we have a DJ, and the whole community comes out. So this is something that the community can rally around, and is something that is huge for our students and is opportunities that they otherwise would not receive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
George Kasnick, followed by Paul Filachi.
George Kasnick, 609 Green Street, Havert Grace. Oops. All right. President Vincente, distinguished council members, our word of honor should mean something. When I took the military officer oath of office, I made certain promises, supporting and defending the Constitution of the United States, bearing true faith and allegiance to well and faithfully discharging my duties. I kept that promise in West Germany, in Virginia, and in Iraq. When I tell my children I will support their decisions, even if I might have chosen a different path, I keep that promise. Regardless of changing situations, regardless of unanticipated obstacles, I keep those promises. When I promise those who entrust me with confidential information that I will safeguard it, I maintain that confidence. Sometimes it costs to myself. I keep those promises. Our word, our promises are reflective of our honor. They're reflective of who we are as people, they drive whether we are taken seriously by others, they're determinants of our influence, they mold how we are seen and how we are heard. In the end, our word of honor is all we have. As a colleague, as a father, as a husband, as a soldier, my word of honor is important to who I am. The county executive promised a 5%, $15 million budget increase to Hartford County Public Schools. He's a military officer, an officer of the court, and the executive of this county. The council stood up for us last year, saving us from deep cuts, somehow finding $10 million. Please hold the county executive to his word this year and make it mean something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening. Paul Filachi, 320 Marina Avenue in Perryman. I just wanted to echo with my neighbors and those that are here and those that are not here from the Perryman area, that we would like the overhead truck monitoring system that you guys just passed here earlier in the spring to be added to the budget. The cost for that, it's only like $50,000. I think we should be able to find that. The Perryman Well Field Study, we can do the full study, besides just putting in the filters, and then Spessusha Road improvements that Glenn had gone through. And areas where you guys maybe will find some money is one of my, my favorite areas, the enterprise zones. Hartford County's two enterprise zones in Aberdeen and Havert Grace and the Edgewood Job are designated by the Maryland Department of Commerce. Encourage the creation of well-paying jobs. Well, I know in the Aberdeen-Perryman area, every single warehouse has a, you know, job they're looking for people to hire there. They don't need tax credits for that, for the 17, 18 dollar an hour jobs they have there. They have plenty of openings. Ensure retention and spur expansion of resident businesses. Some of the name of the businesses there, they're not residential. Web Restaurant, Sephora, it's not even a U.S. company. Ace Logistics, GSO Logistics, Wayfair, Clorox, Fanatics, and Amazon. They're all out of state, they're not in the county, not in the state, and we're giving them tax credits. Promote development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land and buildings. Mitchell Farm and Aberdeen Woods are not vacant, and if they're, the, um, plan for the enterprise zone is to use it on brown industrial areas, not green woods and farms. They want to support the county's commitment to revitalize old industrial areas of Hartford County. It's not being used like that in Hartford County. Just wanted to go into some of the tax credit, because it's real money. Real property tax credits are available for up to 10 years on capital investments with a credit of 80%. On increases in assessed value of real property for the first five years, 80%. Credit then decreases by 10% annually for the remaining five years. They also give, for this job creation, they give discount, um, credits of $1,000 up to $6,000 per employee for a year. So I told you some of the businesses, they're all out of state, out of the country on some of them. So for, from 2018 to 2027, a rough estimate of these, they're, they're somewhere between 173,000 to 350,000 per business, per year. So over that 10-year period, we're talking $23.5 million. Now, that's shared with the state of Maryland, so we get Hartford County's walked away from 11.5 of that, it's 11.8 million dollars. So I think we could use some of that money if we shrink the enterprise zones from these farms and woods, or just eliminate them, and keep some of that tax revenue. The other thing I wanted to just echo some of the other speakers here is, I have four kids that made it through kindergarten through 12th grade in Hartford County, and every single year that they played a sport, for that season, they did better, their grades were better. So this, when they were in season, they're so busy, they, all they can do is go to sport and, and study and do their work. And when they're out, they're not. So that's definitely, if you want to have improved grades, you know, from my experience, keep the kids active. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more registered speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude this budget public hearing. Thank you.[1752.57][1752.57]